Thank you for your suggestions and birthdays celebrating the Kolarutan Before we close the conference, I would like to thank you for attending today's meeting I need your suggestions, at least, to help us to get through this Thank you, honorable, you should come to the conference, to celebrate your birthday
Okay, we will sing Happy Birthday to you Happy Birthday to you Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday to you Happy Birthday to you Happy Birthday to you Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday to you Happy Birthday
Salamat, thank you, selamat, selamat sa tanan ngayon Selamat sa tanan ngayon, dili kanta dala sayaw Ah, karol, bisa toon, ah, kiling yung ison Kamu napalali pain katong magipamotay ninyo Ah, panahon na, kita gaan tagi kayo sa inyo Oo, napalapas selamat, ninyo, o, sa, napalapas Ah, na'to, ta'ga, kita tanan, bisa toon, o, dili Na'to, ando, na'tao, ando, napalapas, napalapas, makuha, kita tanan Na'to, ta'ga, ta'kas, kita buwet, uban ka ninyo, o Ah, maka, ta'g, nyo, dugaan pa ni kamu, ka nasik, para sa pagalaga sa ato, mga kaexulan May muntak, selamat sa tanan
Okay, recognize, honorable, Miss Don
Thank you for answering here Meron nga, mga contribution, narong may buhaki, may mahay, ato na ngayon, ipantry Para, obnang, systema, adusina sa pagpuno ng ato
Okay, okay, honorable, angayamol, ba ang majority?
Yes
Okay Before let among posid, no, at least susun pa dena to ang concern, eh, honorable, losi ka, ah, losi ka, Akian Atos sa, recognize, ah, early, kayo ng iskuhan kami, from the, ah, family of honorable, Miss Don, and ninyo, Mr. Bapakan Kana yang, early, get, karaparan, ang tampa init, na'to, sa bummas, bulas, irare Ah, na'ng, ngayon, buhinit, ubatan, tapi, no, okay So, posita, ah, I recognize, ah, to ang, ah, member, ah, M.C. Tadilera
Ah, okay, so, my respect of the honorable August Buddy Ah, with our deciding, honorable, Panguho Ah, in behalf of the member Ah, this is with regards with the Kolarutan Farm School Actually, thank you also for the efforts, ah, to ang Sanbunian Bayan Ah, we have acquired a certification from the Department of Education That the Kolarutan Farm School does not exist, and a masterly On our enabling documents for our sanitary latrine and other activities, ah, Kolarutan Farm School Ah, fortunately, last, ah, week, I had there in digging in our regional office And I have consulted with this, ah, sinayu of the document So, the Assistant Regional Director, in our own technical services advice That we have to have, ah, an affidavit of waiver of rights And our quitclaim from the Department of Education For us to draft, and requesting that in our to draft, the Kolarutan Farm School In favor of local government of Todela, and we can apply for antispatia patent So, with this, ah, we have additional request, with this August Buddy To have a resolution requesting the Department of Education, Regional Office Ten, the National City To the school division of Misamis Occidental, with the Office of Division Superintendent That for an affidavit of waiver of rights and quitclaim regarding the Kolarutan Farm School Located at Kolarutan Settlement, Todela, Misamis Occidental So, hopefully, we can pass draft this, so that we can process whatever necessary for us To have the name for the LGO, the existing 19 hectares, and the Kolarutan Farm School, Kolarutan Settlement Thank you, and good morning, happy birthday, Montihan
Okay, M.C. Tadilera, ah, member, recognize, honorable, Miss Don
Okay, thank you, sir chair Ah, so, happy na't come meet me sa superintendent class Monday, ah, na'tiha sa TikTok, so invite ko nila to a meeting, no So, naisbuta nga mo ang dito So, ready meeting, no, kara, o, one resolution, si Enoeng sila, baka'y para maassign niya Pero, na'te, damay po, ni Muriyong sa toan Kaya, elektro, na-exupated la, tukay na mahal Kaya, naisbuta na, kubinato, o, na two years ba'ng Until now, wala pwedeng ka na papasis na ma-transfer na sa LGO Todela, a property Although, ka na, exupated pwedeng na para sa sinod, no Pero, dapat, hindi ko na ma-sign, o, permission, si Go, senior Not until, ang property ma-transfer from LGO, la, ah, the house to Kaya, na'ng meet, kara, LGO Todela, ayak pasya pa transfer, sa ma-sign, o, donation So, dahil, no, kaya, diya, sa payan, na'to, tibay, wala pwedeng motion, po, sa parang bay Kaya, mo'tin, diya, mo' na, sa parang bay So, ako na, ang iyan, ha, po mo' na, na, esto, ato, poan, na'te, na'to, man Tam, na'antigdo, papasis na po, para, o, madunit, sa, ang motion Kaya, na'ng, na'ng, po' ikuwan, sa, po' ani, sa, po' ani, sa, po' ani Na'ng, 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 magkuwan, dito, Farm School, ang ada, lusod So, isa na na'antigdo, which is, karoon jan, nag-strike na sila, nang sirin mga tao, di deploy, di, ano, kung, design na Deploy na sila sa day, kila mo' o, ayung good, satisfied, kila nadi-suchta, good So, kila na lang na, matataan na, sila, outside, na, kila na na ma-transfer sa property sa day
Okay, thank you sa information, honorable, Miss Don, no So, in line sa request, ah, to ang member, nakapalili, organisisyon, isus, request So, ah, in charge, si committee, talo, dismader, para ma-pass draft na'to, o, gusay, o, na Di kinanlan, aning, ah, request, eh, honorable, senior Okay, thank you, sa M.C. Tadilera, sa ibang tay
Okay, thank you
Okay, so, thank you mayos, to mga bisita, ng tungtangan, eh, honorable, Akian Ah, to ang member, pap, sundan, atin mo' kung tema Okay, prosita, ini, privilege, ang tani, por dos, August Buddy Prosita, so, proposed ordinance and the solutions Requests and requests
Requests and requests, eh, letter from the municipal mayor, dated January 29, 2024 Requesting the August Buddy for an extra distribution and the benefits and safety of Dr. Abizara Wonyas And letter, eh, letter from the municipal mayor, Samuel Farahino, dated February 2024 Requesting the August Buddy for a solution, past the debt, regional office ten To the National City, through a school division of Misamis Occidental Office of the School Division Superintendent, for an affidavit of waiver of rights Or quitclaim regarding the Kolarutan Farm School, located in, parang, Kolarutan Settlement, Todela, Misamis Occidental In favor to the local government of Todela, Misamis Occidental
Okay, eh, motion Recognize, honorable, Miss Don
Ah, Mr. Chair, and this, ah, letter, number seven The chair, to proceed, number two, meeting, ah, that use
Si kan, honorable chair Kiling, ay, dini
Ay, dini
Okay Ah, for, po' ni Eleven
Yes
Okay, eh, kiling, eh, sinus Si kan Mo' ba, eh, honorable, eh, honorable, just, kan, eh, ba, eh, honorable lagi Ah, I can give letter request, municipal mayor, for committee, level Okay, ah, recognize, honorable, Miss Don, may remarks
Ah, letter from, I move for a resolution, requesting a text Ah, require, a request, no, kaya, di'or, to Issue a waiver, ah, we think that name of the property, eh, Kolarutan In favor of LGO Todela
Okay, na, ay, motion, honorable, Miss Don, for committee eleven And may remarks, honorable, Miss Don, na I move na'to, directly, without any committee report, or any further clarification, for this matter
Okay, what, you want?
Move, move
Thank you
Ah, sir chair, mo' ah, ina'ng, na'ng, eh, dali'ong Right, eh, resolution, na'ng, niya, the question, the text, eh, hindi, po' si Guro, ni'ong, okay, sa to, ading
Okay, honorable, oh, sure, please, sir, or the, the master, honorable, Miss Don Eh, do'by, no, ko, tani, naging, na, na'git, eh, dili, miss, o, matuon, na'at, eh, so, hinat, eh, na'ng, eh, na'ng, eh Again, recognize, eh, honorable, oh
Ah, look, by, mission, sir chair
Okay Honorable, oh, closing motion, and then, joint motion, honorable, Miss Don
Yeah, I move for going motion of resolution, requesting a text
Data, data
Ah, that act, ah, that act, eh, and presented The petition, and quickly, regarding Kolarutan Farm School, engaged in Kolarutan Settlement Good night
Ah, motion, ah, motion, eh, honorable, Miss Don, to pass a resolution, no For requesting the regional office, the Department of Education, for, ah, sa, 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 complaints, sa Kolarutan Farm School niya Owned by LGO, so, motion, sir, by, approve I, eh, honorable, oh
Eh, I just would like to, one, sir chair, as a, sir chair, transition, actually, the abilities, oh It's
Kiling, mo' tong, doctor, talabayos, ah
Talabayos
Ah, okay Eh, pa'ing, ko' nasan, isang, money, to finance, kaya, di'gek, sa talabayos, ko' ano, o, ato, mapalo, po, da'ang, po
Pa'pasap, po, sorry Padarin, po
Wala kaniya
Ah, honorable, August Buddy, so, kaso, kela'ustan niyo, kaso, pati, talabayos We have finally, passed this August Buddy For a resolution on the benefits, safety, and security of Doctor, Abizara, of gas Attached is a copy of letter from I.T., and due it for your reference Hopeing for this request, or give support action
Para safety na, no, eh, no
Benefits
No
Benefits, fifty thousand monthly boardroom lashing benefit Fifty thousand annual additional benefits Six hundred pesos monthly low benefits, four hundred pesos monthly supplies One thousand monthly CEP Total of two hundred thirty thousand
Mr. Chair Ah, I move this, ah, item, sir chair, to, 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 sir chair
Si kan Mo' ba, eh, honorable, oh, letter request, honorable mayor, for committee eleven, committee financial, scan the, eh, honorable Samuel Farahino, the third, scan by, approve Other communications, na, committee reports, any numbers, ah, any committee report, check
Ah, committee report number twenty-four dash eight Joint Committee Meeting on Looseness, Repetitions, and Labor, and Digital Governance Agenda one, draft municipal ordinance number two dash thirty-five, establishing an online feedback management system O.S.M.S. of the Sanbunian Bayan, and the whole LGO of Todela Finding, the committee found to change the title from online feedback management system To an ordinance creating the Todela complex action team, and institutionalizing the feedback management system In all government offices and departments Preparation approved by committee eleven, and move to second, waiting for deliberation Agenda two, requesting the August Buddy for an ordinance creating the position of Naras One Finding, change that I.T. number thirty-five to I.T. number forty-one for the position of Naras One Recommendation, approve by committee eleven, and move to second, waiting for deliberation Agenda three, letter from the municipal mayor, dated January 18, 24, President August Buddy For an ordinance creating the position of Rudan, half Midway Three Finding, the committee found to remove that or never in a section two It is the discretion of the committee to decide in what position do it for eight, and approve The committee recommends to approve the Midway Three instead of Midway Four, and staffing at Midway Two The promotion should be gradual Recommendation, approve by committee eleven, to create an ordinance for Midway Three, not to Midway Four Agenda four, letter from the Abaca Weaver Association, requesting for the August Buddy for accreditation Findings, the committee found that Abaca Weaver Association complies with requirements for accreditation Recommendation, the committee, in balance, the Abaca Weaver Association's score approval Sign approved by the任督乌布,任督范尼,任督,任督,任督, honorable Magat, honorable, Balais, and honorable, Gati
Okay, so, honorable, oh, sir, recognize
Yes, sir chair, ah, I, ah, draft ordinance, sir chair, number two, that thirty-five, sir chair I move from, ah, committee, to second reading, sir chair And, ah, ordinance, ah, position of Naras One, Naras One, and Midway Three Sir chair, I move for first, to si kan, best, sir chair, for deliberation And then, ah, letter for, from the Abaca Weaver Association, which is from the August Buddy, sir chair, for after, accreditation Best, sir chair, is, I move from first, to second, also, sir chair
Si kan, recognize, honorable Mo' ba, eh, honorable, oh, committee report, from committee level, for second reading, for deliberation Judicated by honorable, Miss Balais, and honorable, Miss Don, is served by, approve Committee, the conclusions
Committee report number twenty-four dash six, committee, number four, chair Agenda, draft ordinance and ordinance, regard resugaring or rewarding the entry of ducks in the municipality of Todela, Misamis Occidental Findings, A, aside from Kabul, Aluna, and Aylo, angitan idea of the Sarjima collectees for the entry of ducks B, the price organization collects three thousand pesos per district, so that there's people to order the duck Indication of the divided, how many works in every district or area And C, these ducks will comply with mayor's permit on the investigation The committee, according to following A, the committee agreed, uniform the amount of collections for three hundred pesos on day B, the committee agreed, all clearances must have a running official receipt C, the committee agreed, that the harvested area of the sixty-four cents applied to the entry of ducks, instead of eighty percent And D, the committee learned, that, to add the following processes to the draft ordinance requirements Eight years of PKI, years of barangay, and three years per minute The meeting adjourned, at exactly three thirty in the afternoon, sign approved, honorable, Miss Don Honorable Sumapat, honorable, Tampulino, and honorable, oh
Eh, honorable, Miss Don, is served by, recognize
Okay, sir chair, ah, I think, oh, the draft is already, okay, no, na'ng, na' So, eh, ano, wala tayong mga questions, and move this for second reading, and application
Thank you, honorable, ah
Si kan, honorable
Committee report, o, second reading, for deliberation, judged by, eh, honorable, Balais, motion is served by, approve Committee, finance, ending, ang ato ang, committee, last, script, mo' kay Didn't, sa tanan, mapapasis, aning mga, mo' natis, sa tanan, eh, may, eh, mafirmahan, eh, mayor, ah, ato ang annual budget So, wala, po' niya, po' kuya, sir, ti, ah, ah, ti'po ni mayor, na'firmahan, so, hindi na, sa, po' ni, basi, ni script, eh Po' kuya, siya, na'po, inmohan, o, action, kay Until na, wala, po' po' na, abo ni mayor, kay, ang annual budget, na'firmahan, eh, diniya So, ano lang I can, eh, recognize, honorable, you should come to the conference
Committee report number twenty-four, or seven, committee, eh, over, we can, actually, certify, subject one Our ordinance for amending section forty-one, and municipal ordinance number thirty-one dash two An ordinance creating water system and sanitation of Code of Todela Two, relocation of market vendors, A, Oka'ya, is, eh, Naga's Park, verifying, Batsan, and Day B, market show owners, relocation for the rezuberation of old market Three, Pasalubung Center of Days, and for organizing of Todela Chamber of Commerce The meeting started at nineteen thirty in the morning, by, eh, the ladies, Dayan Grace, Gutales Representative, Officer, honorable, Miss Sumapat, we care, the meeting, oral, findings Agenda one, the committee agreed to amend the logistic rate from one hundred twenty to one hundred fifteen, for commercial Instead of fifty, it can be twelve hundred For elected water use, the minimum is two hundred, titled with an additional five percent per year The committee agreed to add in the ordinance, the privilege of landowners, who have water tax, which are still working To give them ten cubic meters for free, and they will pay the six cubic that they have consumed The schedule due date will be every fifteen days after rebate Payment shall be made by the water consumer within seven days, from the day of the rebate, to a day of a ten percent discount There is no additional discount A discount of ten percent will be given to senior citizens up to the minimum cubic meter consumption So, there is no additional discounts In addition, if a senior citizen will pay early, he or she can apply the one discount only Agenda two, for a car, need for stalls displayed around the park There are cars to be moved, because they can cause the area to run out during monsoon and day There are one hundred eighteen stalls, surrounded by the rezuberation of our old market But not all of them will be moved from Mr. Balais' area, straight to the food court Agenda three, I have already negotiated one of the business orders, that they are already willing to display the product at the Pasalubung Center And agenda four, is to identify stakeholders here, Todela, and make sure that our business associations must be activated Recommendation, the committee agreed to move agenda one for second meeting The fifty stores continue to display at the right spot for one day only There is a renovation of the fifty stalls in our old market, located right near place, in the new parking building The committee agreed to set a meeting, to stakeholders for the opening of the Pasalubung Center And the committee agreed to visit our Chamber of Commerce, to get various ideas about their policies Honorable, Kitis Balas, senior, who, at turn, the meeting, centered by this, honorable, Maris, this store The committee ended at eleven fifty in the morning Sign approved by honorable, Sumapat, honorable, Miss Don, honorable, Balais, senior, and honorable, oh
Eh, honorable, Sumapat
Yes, sir chair, thank you I would like to move the, ah, ordinance, amending section forty-one, or municipal ordinance number twenty-one zero two By just waiting, the witnesses' concentration, go to the bar, and draft, the committee, two, basic, and meeting, sir chair
I can, honorable, to the conference
Eh I'm here
Okay Mo' ba, eh, honorable, to the conference, eh, eh, eh Scanned, eh, eh, honorable, eh, dinag, eh, motion is served by, approve Okay, clear, yeah, please, next, honorable, oh
Okay Sir Lady Ah, eh, 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 resolution, number two, I accept the petition, for the Naidon, resolution, requesting, and assistance, for all of Naidon Ah, the sleeping boards, dated by, eh, B.N., Silar, and
Any motion
Sir Chair
Recognize, honorable, lagi
Ah, barangay resolution number zero-four, series of twenty-eight, twenty-four, barangay Naidon I move from first to second reading, sir chair
Si kan, honorable, sir
Mo' ba, eh, honorable, lagi, judged by, eh, honorable, Balais, and remark, there is none, motion, honorable, is served by, approve
Ah, eh, number two, zero-zero, two, 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 de, ah, resolution, programing, yama, o, three hundred seventy-six thousand, degen, parang, two, two, percent Queen, eh, two, two, baras, budget, for the following Ah, two, two, three, barangay, o, o, siete, ah, three hundred two, six thousand, and one hundred fifty thousand
Lord of Chair, recognize, honorable, Balais
Thank you, honorable chair, barangay resolution number two, share, result, two, two, four, barangay, compare I move from first, to second, again, honorable, chair
Si kan Mo' ba, eh, honorable, Balais, judged by, eh, honorable, Farahino And may remarks, there is none, motion, honorable, Balais, served by, approve
Resolution number two, zero, eh, dash, two, 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 kani, po' na'straper Ah, resolution, programing, yama, o, three hundred thousand, po' rea, araw, na barangay expenses
Recognize, honorable, Miss Don
Resolution number, there, there, two, there's, ah, twenty-four, open one, proper, and move from, see, and, third, final, approv, approval, and, check
Thank you, honorable, Miss Don, eh, mo' ba, eh, honorable, Miss Don, judged by, eh, honorable, Balais Resolution, ang barangay, number proper, from first to second, second to third, third to final, approval, is served by, approve
Request for approval, for barangay, annual budget, limited before, ah Ah, barangay, nano, Kolarutan, Taho, Kesilaxan, Agustin Lapuro, Marihuo, Central, Rupa, Basilo, Siba, eh, Siba, annual, barangay, in distance time Ah, Luwak, Basiran, Central, Rupa, Bungabok, Tikdok, Bara, Bitugas, Naidon, Marihuo, Sinusa, Balon, Kenipukan, Proper, and Kasila, Pesan, Agustin
Sir Chair
Recognize, honorable, lagi
Ah Ah, request of the approval, barangay, annual budget, sir chair, I move from, ah, first reading I differ to, ah, first reading, or later, to committee, on, final, sir chair
Si kan Mo' ba, eh, honorable, lagi, judged by, eh, honorable, Ujungan, honorable, oh Request for annual budget, over my annual budget, limited before, for committee, eh, is served by, approve This is, proceed, sir
Sir Chair
Recognize, honorable, lagi
Ah, since we have, we agreed that, ah, begin, ten thousand, for its barangay, sir chair Eh, I think, eh, I'm going to, ah, move, here, sir chair, I move from, ah, barangay, resolution number four Series of twenty-eight, twenty-four, barangay, Naidon, sir chair, I move from, si kan, to third, and third, to final approval, within the internal rules
Again, recognize, ah, honorable, Miss Don, remarks, and remarks
If you can, sir chair, ah, po' di pa, na'to, eh, move, from, na'wala, sa, maka, na'find, eh, di'ra, to budget
Ah, wala, po' din, ma'ang, tay, on the process, mo' n'ya, po' ni, okay, ano, sir Okay, mo' by, honorable, lagi, from second to third, third to final approval Judicated by, eh, honorable, Miss Don, honorable, Balais, is served by, approve Amount is ten thousand
Yes, sir chair
Ah, before, si Guro, ah Before na'to, eh, eh, process, eh, i-inform, eh, na'to, ang barangaya Na, mo' ra, eh, na'to, na, eh, masimula, kina-inform, eh, in city, the morning, na'to, o, in city, eh, on Friday, pero, wala, wala, yon Okay This is, proceed, sir, honorable, oh
Ah, sir chair Ah, for ordinance, number two, two, ah, sir chair Creating, ah, position of the administrative board Book binder four, under, F.P.D.C., and A.C.R., sir chair
For deliberation
Yes, sir chair
Address Assistant Four, Book Binder Four, Salary Rate Ten, I.T. number thirteen Under the Office of the Municipal Planning and Development Coordinator, Administrative Assistant Four, Book Binder Four Salary Rate Ten, I.T. number seven, of the local Civil Register of this municipality And integrating the same to its organizational structure and stopping pattern Whereas, section seventy-six of GPOP Act Seventy-One, Sixty, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of Nineteen Eighty-One Provides that every local government unit shall design and implement its own organizational structure and stopping pattern Taking into consideration its service performance and financial capability Subject to the minimum standard and guidelines prescribed by the Civil Service Commission Whereas, in the exigency of public service and to promote efficiency and effective personnel force, personnel force There is a need to create a position of Administrative Assistant Four, or Book Binder Four, I.T. number thirteen In the Office of the Municipal Planning and Development Coordinator, and I.T. number seven, of the local Register of this municipality Being according, this maya, bay, at tila, misamis, occidental, that Section one, that the imposition of Administrative Assistant Four, Book Binder Four Salary Rate Ten, I.T. number thirteen, under the Office of Municipal Planning and Development Coordinator And I.T. number seven, of the local Civil Register of this municipality, is hereby created Section two The qualification is standard for the position herein, created is subject to the minimum standards Guidelines, rules, and laws of the Civil Service Commission Section three, that nothing imposition of the Administrative Assistant Four, Book Binder Four Salary Rate Ten, shall perform the following duties and functions Number one, repair broken book bindings and torn book leaves Handle records at storage room, like with people, organizing and sorting Buy news pages into books or other bound forms Patch and bind old records Create paper to afford later facility interning pages Gel age pages, and inscribe lettering on books covers And reports need for tear and replacement of equipment Section four, this is an appropriate synopsis, and after, any limits of the affirmative position Shall be appropriated in the local government unit of Todela, Misamis Occidental Subject to the existing budgetary accounting and auditing rules and regulations Section five, any resolutions, or ordinance, or rules, or regulation, in